Good evening. I call to order this meeting of the Gladstone City Council for Tuesday, October 8th, 2024 at 6:31 PM. The City of Gladstone is abiding by guidelines set forth in House Bill 2560, which requires the governing body of the public body, to the extent reasonably possible, to make all meetings accessible remotely through technological means and provide opportunity for members of the general public to remotely submit oral and written testimony during meetings, to the extent in-person oral and written testimony is allowed. Therefore, this meeting will be open to the public both in-person and virtually using the Zoom platform. The Zoom instructions are on the agenda to the meeting. If members of the public would like to comment on an agenda item either virtually or in person, they were to have emailed their comments or request to speak to the city recorder prior to noon today. Individuals attending in person may submit a speaker card to the city recorder prior to the beginning of the meeting. Some comments are limited to three minutes. The city council will also have Gladstone City events announcements during the meeting and business from the audience at the end of the meeting. To speak during either time, once again, you were to have emailed to the city recorder prior to noon today with your name, topic of discussion, and city of residence. And individuals attending in person may submit a speaker card to the city recorder prior to the beginning of the meeting. Comments are limited to three minutes. Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Huckabee.
Present.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Blough.
Present.
Counselor Cook.
Present.
Counselor Roberts.
Present.
Counselor Garlington.
Present.
Mayor Milch.
Present. Please stand for the flag suit. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Administrator Betts, are there any additions or corrections to the agenda for tonight's meeting?
I have nothing, Mayor, thank you.
All right, I'll go over the first part of the agenda. We have our consent agenda, which includes approval of the August 13th, 2024 regular minutes, approval of the August bank balances, of the budget report for the period ending August 31st, 2024, approval of the August check register, legal costs for the month of August, and department head monthly reports for September 2024, which I think you all tonight got a copy of a public works report that wasn't in the original packet, but we have that to add to it. Then we'll have correspondence and Gladstone City events announcements, and then we'll move into the regular agenda after that. So we begin with the consent agenda. Does any counselor have any item on this consent agenda that they would like to remove for individual consideration? I don't hear any, so I will accept a motion to approve the consent agenda as provided.
So moved.
A second.
All right, it's been moved by Counselor Huckabee, seconded by Counselor Alexander. Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Huckabee.
Yes.
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Counselor Blough.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes, the consent agenda is approved. Administrator Betts, do we have any correspondence?
No, we do not, thank you.
All right, we move on to Gladstone City event announcements. Has anyone requested to speak tonight?
We have one, Bob Everett.
Bob, that's a surprise. Old faithful, come on up, Bob.
I have, I just want to say how much I've missed all of you in the last couple of months on these meetings and too, and you know, because this is a highlight of my month, there's no doubt about it. But first, to take old news here, I want to thank everybody, including of course, the city itself, Jackie, all the counselors, the mayor, for all that you did for the festival. It's been that long since we've actually spoken, because Bryce and I were both sick right after the festival. And so we didn't make it that first meeting, and since then, I've been pretty busy. So we do want to thank you very, very much for all the support that you gave us during that, during that event. And of course, I'm also, we are starting, the Rotary Club is now starting once again this year for bingo, next Friday night, October 18th. Hope to see everybody out, and we, the Cats Meow is going to be our sponsor here, so for, I won't make a cat joke, but being a cat lover myself, hopefully will raise a lot, large, large funds for them, that's for sure. That would go a long way. That's basically what's going on. And, but if anybody has any questions or anything else, I don't really have much, much else to say, but I did want to come here today just to thank everyone, so that's for sure. Okay, go ahead.
Counselor Garlington. I was talking with another counselor this last week about cats. So what is the Cats Meow all about?
It's a, okay, I have to admit, I'm not perfectly knowledgeable about everything they do, but they are a rescue place that they do house cats and will look to find new homes for them. I know that we, my wife took in a couple, couple kittens for a couple of weeks until a home could be found for them, and that was through them. And so that's basically what they try to do, just sort of welfare, get, you know, basically also to have them looked after, spayed, things like that then too. And so that's, that's, you know, that's really their mission. No different really than any, than sort of a dog place, it's just that they, they look after, you know, they care about cats, so that's for sure, so, and.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
I just want to thank you and the Rotary Club and everybody involved for putting on another great, successful festival. It was fun, that's for sure. And we also had a good time with Movies in the Park. We didn't quite get the turnout that we were, we were hoping overall, but, but then again, it is the first year. And it was interesting seeing Little Shop of Horrors, because it was the director's cut. I'd never seen that, went on and on. Yeah, it was not the way that it was, that it ended before, that's for, that's for sure. So, and hopefully, I'll be able to attend the meetings a little bit more and stay longer. Today, I'd like to stay, but I am packing up to head out to a city that one of the counselors went to a couple of weeks ago, and hopefully she left it in good shape for me, and that is Vegas, and for my birthday. And so hopefully I have a good time, and I got to finish packing. Anyway, thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Director Bob.
Night.
See you next Friday.
All right, we move on to the regular agenda. We have three big items tonight. The second reading of ordinance 1534, from the Gladstone Urban Renewal Plan Amendment, and directing that the notice of approval be published. A public meeting regarding the severely rent burdened community, and a public hearing on ordinance 1535, a comprehensive plan text amendments for climate-friendly and equitable communities, and legislative development code updates to Title 17 of the Gladstone Municipal Code. So we will begin with ordinance 1534. This is an ordinance that we voted on last month and passed by, I believe it was a four to one vote, which was not unanimous, so we need to do a second reading. Staff?
Thank you, Mayor. Staff has not planned any presentation tonight, simply stayed, the city charter says that if an ordinance is approved unanimously at one meeting, then it can go into effect. As you alluded to, this was passed at the September 10th meeting, four to one, so I would just have you call for the second reading of the ordinance.
All right. Do you have wording for a statement on, let's see, yes. All right, so on page eight dash five, I will, I will accept a motion to call for a second reading.
I motion that we call for a second reading of ordinance 1534, an ordinance making certain determinations and findings relating to and approving the Gladstone Urban Renewal Plan, substantial amendment, and directing that notice of approval be published.
I second that.
All right, it's been moved by Counselor Cook and seconded by Counselor Blough. Any discussion? Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Blough.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Huckabee.
Yes.
Counselor Garlington.
No.
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes. The vote passes six to one, so the second reading passes and the ordinance is adopted. And the next item is a public meeting regarding Gladstone as a severely rent burdened community, and I'll turn to staff for the presentation on this.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. So tonight Gladstone is conducting a public meeting because it is designated as a severely rent burdened community, which means that over 25% of the population is spending more than 50% of income on rent. Heather Austin with Three J Planning has a short presentation to go over the severely rent burdened community, what that means for us, and we're also going to identify some ways that Gladstone has been working to improve housing affordability in our community.
Thank you, Administrator Betts and Mayor Milch and the council. I wanted to present this item tonight in conjunction with agenda item number 10, which is our packet of code updates. We are, as Administrator Betts said, required to hold this meeting, and so it made sense to us on staff to coordinate that with some efforts that we have been undertaking to change some of our regulations related to housing. So I will go over those just very briefly. As Administrator Betts said, we are a severely rent burdened community. Right now, in the packet, you saw that we are at 26.9% as of 2022, which is the most recent detail that the state has provided us. The city is working to reduce the cost of housing, particularly rental housing, by updating the development code so that design review is no longer required for any kind of middle housing. This includes duplex, triplex, quadplex, townhouse, and cottage clusters. Again, a state regulation that we have now implemented. But what is not a state regulation, but is a staff level initiative, was to create a middle housing worksheet so that builders can more easily navigate the building permit process and reduce the time and expense to put together their building permit application, making sure they're meeting all of the city's standards. So I worked with the public work staff to make sure that we were putting forward the information a developer might need, as well as giving an opportunity for the developer to give us the space we need to figure out what requirements are going to apply to the application. And then those two are completed, which is what the check mark is for. This evening in agenda item 10, we'll also be talking about adding some changes to the development code, such as allowing outright commercial building conversions into residential uses, that's existing structures that are already in commercial use, converting those over, allowing outright multifamily buildings that are serving lower-income households, those are households that are 60% or less of the average area median income, and then also allowing outright those mixed-use buildings where you have a commercial use mixed with residential uses, and those would go up to moderate income, which is 80 to 120% of the area median income. There's more about that in the next application. I just wanted to highlight some of the initiatives the city has been working on to help alleviate some of these issues. But the real point of this public meeting is to allow public comment opportunity on housing cost and availability in Gladstone, give people a chance to say what their issues are that they are experiencing, either from a renter perspective or from a housing provider perspective. We did do an extensive outreach, sending mailed invitations to this meeting to the providers of moderate and low-income housing in our region, as well as the regular means of public notice that we always follow. So with that, I would like to just open public meeting, public comments.
One thing that I also wanted to share was that the last time we had a severely rent burden count was in 2022, and at that time, we were at 33.9%, and now we're at 26.9%. So there has been a decline. The total number of renter households is 1,698, and I also wanted to let you know that I had followed up with the state, asking them how they come up with this data, and it's the American Community Survey, which they gave me link that we could learn more about, but there are questions asked about income, housing costs, and then the burden is calculated off of those responses. So I do think that we are seeing a decline of severely rent burden in Gladstone. But as Heather said, we did do an extensive outreach to all of the providers in the community, and this is really an opportunity for anybody to come and talk to us about ways that we can help them or what they're seeing as well.
I will say, I, I think maybe some of the other counselors too wondered about these figures on the, on the report, because, you know, I wonder, is there a list out there where somebody knows who the renters are, you know, has a list of them and what they make and what their, what their rent is and those ratios and all that? And as, as Administrator Betts explained, it was more an extrapolation of done, of information gathered by a survey, which is representative of the community, which, you know, if you do it right, you get a pretty accurate percentage, but it's not that someone out there has all this fine detail down to who is paying what on rent and how much money they earn. So let's be concerned, in terms of confidentiality issues and privacy issues, I don't think we have anything to be concerned about there. As far as the number going down, you know, there could be a variety of reasons for that. Some of the steps we've taken to, to encourage certain types of housing to be developed, maybe helping people get more affordable housing, maybe following the pandemic, some of the prices that went up when there was great demand for single-family homes in communities, maybe those prices have gone down. Maybe some people who couldn't afford to live here moved away, and they're in some other community right now. So we don't have a whole lot of reason to, to, you know, pat ourselves on the back for doing a better job of this, or to lament the loss, possible loss of some people. It's, it's hard to know the reasons for this. But I think the important thing is, as you say, the item that we have coming up on our agenda next, which will take a look at the efforts we, we are making, because the state is concerned about housing. If, and, and since the pandemic and the late 2000 decade, you know, we, we have not, nationwide, we have not produced as much housing as we need in the places where people want to live. And that means that if the supply is low and the demand is high, then the price is going to go high, and that creates the burdens on people. So any efforts we make through guidance from the state and things that they're requiring us to do and things that we are choosing to do at a local level are, are attempts to address this matter. Tammy, did we have anyone who requested to speak tonight?
We did not receive any requests to speak, and I don't know if anyone online would like to speak. They can raise their hand now. And I do not see anyone raising their hand.
All right, well, I will let other city counselors weigh in their thoughts on this issue. This is a required public meeting, and I'm glad that we have this data in front of us and that we're getting this on a fairly regular basis. Counselor Huckabee?
Thank you. I just have a data question, and if the answer is no, I'm perfectly fine with that. Do we have a number that the almost 1,700 households, resident numbers, bodies, that represents?
Are you referring to the table in the packet on nine dash four?
Yes.
So that is provided by the state, so we don't have further detail in what's on this table.
Okay, no problem, thank you.
So it's listed as households, so that could be a single person, it could be a family, we don't really know how many individuals that number represents.
But that is something I can certainly follow up with on the state to see if we can get some more information on that.
Thank you.
Counselor Blough?
Yeah, I also had a question about page nine dash six. That is the most confusing graph. Would you like to maybe comment on what we're looking at there?
I agree, it's very confusing. What I would say is that, you know, Gladstone's line, like Gresham, very close to the point two five, Gladstone and Gresham were both in spitting distance of that 25% marker, so I know, I don't know why the state chose to display this information in this way, it's not readable. What we could have done is traced the Gladstone line for you and put that in a different color, so I apologize for that, but yes, it's terrible.
And, and the 25% line is that standard by which they say it's rent burdened. What they don't have on here is estate average, so that we can know where we are with, with other, you know, across the state.
That's a good point, and I would point out too, on the previous question about nearly 1,700 households being counted in Gladstone, and it, it being by the household level, so it, it does go by household. So if there are two people in the household who work, both of those incomes count in, right? So it should be fairly reflective, whether it's one person living there or two adults, you know, where it gets, you know, different numbers in the household would definitely be where there's a lot of children.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you.
Counselor Garlington? We're able to ask questions. If, I was wondering, how many of these households had Section 8 vouchers? Just out of curiosity.
I do not know. Does the city have any data on how many households in the city have that?
I don't think so. We would probably have to reach out to some of these providers that we noticed this meeting with to have a better understanding on that.
I, I would venture to say it's far fewer than are eligible. The waitlist for Section 8 is quite long, so there are many people who would be eligible for help who are not getting it.
That's good information, Counselor Cook, thank you. And that reminds us again, you know, I, I think about the efforts we made for a capital A affordable housing in our community. We do have some, some apartment complexes that, that were built for people with certain income level requirements. Of course, we have Chukwila Springs, a county project, which you had to qualify for in terms of income level, and we have what we sometimes call naturally occurring affordable housing, our mobile home communities or manufactured home communities, where the rents and costs tend to be on the low side. But once again, it, and then, and then assistance coming from a variety of sources. We had a C4 meeting this week with representatives of the Housing Department of Clackamas County, and once again, we saw a good report on the great job they're doing and the number of people that they assist in a variety of ways, including eviction prevention. And sometimes they have people who have a one-time financial, you know, impediment in their, in their life, a car repair, something like that, it means they're not going to be able to make their rent that month, they're able to go to the county, get some help, and stay in their apartment. Other times, they have people who are old or ill or unemployed and know that they are not going to make their rent anytime, but they have other programs to help people like that. So a lot of our success as a community in Gladstone, it can be attributed to the work that the county is doing. Clackamas County in particular has had a pretty good record of being able to provide housing. We also have seven sites among the so-called scattered sites, own, county-owned homes here in Gladstone, which are housing people with perhaps subsidized housing, and they are looking to sell those homes to some nonprofits that could provide other kinds of supporting houses, housing, for example, respite care for someone who is old and, you know, needs, old or ill, or, you know, some other condition that prevents them from working and, and living in, in housing that they can afford, but maybe they also need some onsite support, and maybe some of the homes that we have in our community that are owned by the county now may someday be that sort of a, of a service. So, yes, Counselor Alexander.
So is that, is, the solution, is it assistance? Is it, because you know, we know, no one's, you pay 12, I pay 14, and they pay 1,600, no one's ever going to say, oh, your rent's only this now, it's never going to lower. And with inflation and everything, you know, even like right there on Ipswich, they built those apartments, you know what I mean? And what they want to charge for them is, it's, it's going to take over 50% a year, you see what I'm saying? If you don't make that much.
Yeah.
So I don't know what the solution is.
I think one of the barriers in Gladstone obviously is the lack of property for us to have the ability, and I think that's why as a council, and we think about 2025, those partnerships with underutilized areas, such as there's a lot of churches in town, do they want to sell parts of their property to develop into homes? I think creatively, that is where Gladstone is going to have to start thinking.
Counselor Cook?
Yeah, I have a question for Heather and Jackie. So the point of this hearing is to hear from residents, but also from housing providers. We don't have too many of them here today, so I'm curious, I think you often have informal conversations with folks who are looking to build housing in Gladstone. From your informal conversations with potential housing providers, have they identified any barriers to building housing in Gladstone?
I think the barriers identified in Gladstone are not unique to Gladstone that I hear about, and those are typically SDC fees, I would say, which, you know, all cities struggle with that, because that's how you get your infrastructure built properly and maintained. So I think that's not a unique challenge, but is one that is raised pretty much by every housing or commercial developer. Sometimes it's related to the process as far as, you know, how long it takes to get a permit and things, so that's one thing that we do have some control over and have been trying to streamline and make quicker. But yeah, I haven't heard anything else as far as barriers, besides the lack of property. You know, some, a few folks say, gosh, I'd love to build in Gladstone, but there's just not, I have to go to unincorporated Clackamas County because there's just not enough property here. So I think, you know, again, not something we have a ton of control over unless we're really diligent about our infill potential. What we can do there.
Well, even if you did like, like to administer bets, okay, say a church sells part of its property, and you build the homes, what is an affordable home for someone that wages aren't going up? You see what I'm saying? What's, there's a hurdle right there. How do you get these to be affordable for people so they aren't over?
And I think it involves partnerships and conversations so that the church understands what the city needs in the community, and you try to bring in those developers that have specific requirements of keeping it at a affordable rate. But yes, it's going to take partnerships and creative thinking in Gladstone to make, to make that happen.
If I can just add on to that, in the code package that's coming later this evening, the multifamily that's permitted outright is specific to households making 60% or less of the average median income, and so those properties would have some sort of restriction on them, that they would have to be available to those households, similarly with mixed use being 80 to 120%. So the code language we're putting forward this evening that opens up those housing opportunities into new commercial zones, those would be specifically limited to households that can prove those income levels.
And, and I would add one more thing, too. Even with market level, market rate housing that, that is built and, and produced in the community, the understanding, a lot of people study the housing issue, is that people can afford to live in there, move in there from something lower, and then, and then they leave a house behind that someone else can eventually afford into, and there is, I hate to use the term trickle-down, but there is a little bit of that trickle-down effect, that by the time the people that can afford the brand-new, bigger market rate homes are in them, there is a, you know, a series of homes that become available to lower people, and they've done studies across the world and the country to see how many sort of, you know, what the chain is, how many exchanges of property it takes to, to all of a sudden have people being able to get, because it is a shortage, and if there are a small number of homes that are lower rent, the people that live in those homes that now make more money and can afford to move out, might move into something else and make that home available. So that is the theory and the hope. Doesn't always happen, and, and again, in a community with, as, like ours, with very little space to add brand-new homes, it doesn't happen as easily as it does in communities that have a lot of space for development.
Well, and one idea I saw that happened, so my brother lives up on Maple Lane, and you know Beaver Creek and Maple Lane, all those new apartments, you've seen them, right?
Up near the shopping center?
Yes, okay. So we were talking to the people out front of them, say what they did, what I thought was a great idea. They said, these cost this much, but if you're in this section over there closer to the corner, and you can prove your, do agricultural work, or two other types of work that your income's lower, you get the same apartment these people. you get the same apartment these people are paying for, for like four hundred dollars less.
All right, yeah.
That's, that's help.
That's, that's the kind of affordable housing that's designed for specific populations and specific income levels. And the one issue with that sometimes is that maybe there's a time limit to that. And then, and then other communities, Los Angeles, other places, they've had these kinds of apartments for a long time. When that thirty or forty year limit runs out, all of a sudden, people are, are, you know, they're out. They, they, they can't keep that same rent anymore. But it is, it is a direct focus on lower income people. And some, some communities are able to provide incentives to providing that kind of housing. Because, yeah. All right, anything else? Oh, Councilor Cook, you have your light on.
I get excited about housing transportation. And so I guess I have another question slash statement for Jackie. The library building, the old library building is still city property. When will we, we be discussing the future of that property?
That'll be part of your city council goal-setting session in January. We will be talking about the different options that the city could consider. But that is an example of city-owned property that you could do a development offering with an affordable housing that the city owns the land, the developer builds housing that's more affordable. But that's exactly the type of partnership that could happen in Gladstone.
That I suppose my question turns into a statement when I say, I will not be on council at that time. So my ask is for the future council to keep this housing discussion in mind when discussing the future of that property. I think so, so, so rarely does, does local government actually have any ability to directly impact housing? We're not building housing. All we can do is control the regulations around it. And I think the best case scenario and, and some of what we're talking about tonight is just getting out of the way so that the market can build housing for people.
All right, thank you, Councilor Garlington.
I, I just wanted to add to the conversation, the, the bigger part that at the C four meeting this last week, they were talking, they had a presentation from housing. And one of the things that they talked about a lot was the different areas in our county that are putting in housing and, and that. And I'm not saying that we should rely on that, but we are privy to a bigger picture that is really going gangbusters and helping with that housing burden in our county area. There's a lot going on and it's a lot of good news that also, you know, one of the things that they talked about, as you had, had talked about was the, the funds that were coming in to help people with all of that, and that's countywide. And we're part of a bigger picture. And I think anybody that's out there listening, that's something that I want them to understand is that we're not alone in this either. We have a lot of help around us and we can also be part of that help, which I love the fact that we're a voice there. So thank you, Mayor Milch.
Thank you, yeah, I'm, I'm really impressed when I go to those meetings and hear the great things the county's doing. Let me, let me put one more thing about this. As you know, the, our governor set a goal of a certain number of housing units being built each year in the state in order to help relieve this shortage of housing that we have across Oregon, as other states do as well. And I did some calculations one time, I thought, well, how are they going to allocate the number of homes that they want to have each community do? And I thought, well, if they do it on the basis of population, Gladstone's share of the number of homes that they want to have would be a hundred, a hundred new homes each year for the next several years. We did a housing needs analysis several years ago and, and updated it recently and determined that based on the projected population growth, we would be doing, I think, something like three hundred and twenty houses over a twenty-year period. It's about sixteen houses per year. And I also figured out that if the governor's goal were spread geographically based on the square miles, a little tighter community like Gladstone, we would just add one new house per year. But I've heard that they finally have come up with some kind of a, a, a algorithm for, for deciding how many homes a, a community is expected to do. And Gladstone's share is something like eighty-four homes, that's what we're hearing, which is, is almost laughable considering. But we are working on, you know, we're seeing more permits for ADUs, for triplexes, duplexes. I don't think we're going to get to eighty-four, but we might get to that sixteen that our own housing needs analysis determined. So, you know, we're working on it. Councilor Roberts, did you have any, anything you wanted to add to this conversation?
I have nothing, thank you, Mayor. This was a well-prepared report, enjoyed reading it.
Well, thank you very much. I, I sometimes miss the hands raised on these things when people are attending by Zoom, I didn't want to leave you out. All right, well, I, I appreciate staff's presentation of this information. And I, I'm with Councilor Cook, I think it needs, it's, this is something that needs to be on our minds all the time. And tonight, our agenda is heavily in this area, so that moves us on to item number ten. And this is considered, consideration of, of approval of an ordinance that would make a lot of text amendments to several chapters in our municipal code. So I will again, ask staff to go ahead and present this one.
Thank you, Mayor Milch, if I can ask that you read the legislative hearing?
Okay, because we are
Thank you.
adopting an ordinance tonight, this requires a hearing. So the public hearing on, oh, let me see where the number is, yes, here it is. An ordinance fifteen thirty-five, chapters filed TXT dash two four dash zero two is called to order. The proposed amendments would, uh, like, let me see. The proposed text amendments would help the, the, the city come in compliance with a community-friendly, climate-friendly and equitable community standards and make it easier for housing to be constructed in Gladstone. I'll just say that, there are a variety of things in there, it covers a lot. The order of business we will follow in conducting this hearing will be just like the last one we did. Presentation of a staff report, entry of correspondence into the record, public testimony, additional staff comments, questions from the city council. We will close the hearing at that point with no further testimony from the audience and then have a discussion by the city council and a decision. So testimony on this, any interested person may present testimony concerning the proposed amendments. The public hearing is your opportunity to comment on the proposal before the city makes a decision. We want to hear what you have to say and we want you to give us your point of view. Help us to understand why you've drawn your conclusion and how it relates to the proposal. Public testimony for this hearing will be called for in three groups, testimony in favor of the proposal, testimony opposed to the proposal and neutral testimony. And I'll just add, the proposal has a number of sections in it, so you could be opposed to one particular part of it and, or, or in favor of another part, I understand that that's likely. If you wish to speak, please fill out one of the testimony forms and submit it to the city recorder. I'll recognize those persons wishing to speak and any questions should be addressed through me. When you testify, please state your name and address for the record as this hearing is being recorded. If you are participating online, click the raise hand button at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. If you are participating via telephone dial star nine to quote, raise your hand at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. And then, so at this time, before we get started, I'd like to ask members of the city council if you are abstaining from this matter or need to declare any conflicts of interest. I'd like you to indicate the nature of the conflict of interest and indicate whether you intend to participate in or abstain from the hearing. So I will start with Councilor Huckabee.
No conflicts.
None.
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 Councilor Roberts? I'm sorry, okay, thank you, and I have none, so I believe all of us are intending to participate. All right, now it's time in the agenda to prevent, present the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor Milch, I appreciate that. So we are here to talk about many improved, changes, updates to our development code, as Mayor Milch said. And they are in four separate categories. So the primary reason that we started this code update was to comply with our climate-friendly and equitable communities parking requirements. But we knew that there were some state laws and also housing initiatives that we also needed to comply with. And we wanted to put it all together for ease of getting it adopted as an ordinance, but also because the city does contract the development code updates through a separate party. And so giving them this chunk of changes together will make it easier for us to get it all codified online and easier to use by the public, instead of doing it piece by piece, month after month. That is just confusing and difficult for everybody. So there is a lot of material here, but to be able to parse it out and know what you're looking at for each of the proposed updates. I highlighted any changes proposed regarding parking in green, regarding housing in yellow, regarding childcare in gray and code cleanup, which is just general, you know, this doesn't really say the same thing as it says in a different section, so just tidying it up a bit. Those are in the aqua color. Parking, so we had the opportunity to meet last month to talk about Gladstone Town Center, which is a climate-friendly area as designated by the state. So you have had a little sneak peek into what we're doing as far as the town center effort and the climate-friendly initiative. This does bring our code into compliance with the OAR section that applies to transportation. The specific bullet points there that are in the green highlight throughout the code updates are that there's no new off-street parking required with any kind of new development within a half mile of McLaughlin Boulevard because that is considered a high-frequency transit corridor. There's going to be no new off-street parking required in and within a quarter mile of our forthcoming town center. We talked at length about that last month, so I think we're all pretty clear on that one. With residential developments, single-family homes detached can still require two spaces. But once you get to a duplex or larger, more than two or more units on one lot, it's one space per unit is the maximum we can mandate there. And then we need to remove all mandates for the smaller units, the affordable housing units and all childcare facilities. We're going to require electric vehicle charging conduit, so just the conduit, to serve at least forty percent of all parking spaces in multi-household or mixed-use developments. This is more of a building code issue, but it does allow a developer of property or of a larger project to kind of see it coming, because what we don't want to do is have someone get to the building permit stage and go, oh, I didn't plan for that. Now I have to redesign it and go back through the process. Currently, in statewide, twenty percent is required. The forty percent comes into play once you hit a CFAC requirement. So Gladstone's required to comply because we're in the metro area. We're going to provide preferential placement of carpool, vanpool parking. We already had carpool, vanpool parking requirements in our code, we're just going to change where there's, those are located. Couple things that are a little different are allowing a redevelopment of a parking lot for bike and transit uses. These are, these are going to be interesting when they come forward and figuring out how you determine that the spaces are not being utilized and things like that. But everybody who's required to meet CFAC is going to have this same problem. So we're going to see how other cities do it, we may be the first, we may be the twentieth, so just is what it is. We're going to allow and facilitate shared parking and then require tree canopy, solar panels or fee-in lieu for those larger parking areas, over a half acre of parking. That's very unlikely, like we said in Gladstone, we're limited on space, but it is the requirement of the state. That's a lot, that's my most wordy slide. So just to say also, in your packet this evening for reference and not being asked to be adopted this evening, is the new Gladstone municipal code, chapter three point one four, about commercial parking lot local tax and how you collect that. We decided to have a separate ordinance hearing on that at your next meeting to keep it separate and give you more of an opportunity to really talk about that specifically. We didn't have to adopt it as part of this development code process. We, we do have to do it for our CFAC standards, but we wanted to keep it separate to keep it clean. And then in addition, there's the new city policy for the conversion of underutilized street parking. That's not going to be a development code section on recommendation from the city attorney. So that is also something that we can talk about further, but something that we'll need to put into place. So everybody saw this map too at the town center discussion, this is the area where there'd be no parking required. This would be adopted into our code as our parking mandate exception map. So anything in teal, you wouldn't require parking to happen. But if a developer wanted to provide parking, it would still need to meet our dimensional standards and our, you know, trees and solar panels and electric vehicle charging and all of that. So they'd have to meet our standards if they chose to provide the parking. Let's see, so that is it for parking. Can I pause there and see if there are any questions before we move on to housing?
That's a good approach, let me, I believe.
Excited about.
Castle, anything transportation and housing related gets, yeah, go ahead.
Not to get the cart ahead of the horse, because I know we're going to be talking about parking lot taxes. Would that include only new parking or existing parking?
It would only include commercial parking lots. So if someone was, like in downtown Portland, when you pay your three dollars for your hour, we don't have any in Gladstone right now. So it would be new, new use as a commercial parking lot. It could be an existing parking lot that someone starts to charge for, and then that would apply.
Interesting, okay, thank you.
Yep. Yes. Whoops, I'm going the wrong way.
Councilor Garlington is referring back to the list of the CFAC requirements.
So, yes, that's all. I'm, I'm sorry, I, I was going to ask a question, but then I, I remembered that you had answered the question in your presentation, so I appreciate that.
Okay, any other questions about the parking proposed changes? Let's move on to housing then.
Okay, excellent. So housing, we touched on a little bit in our previous agenda item. But there have been some changes to housing requirements at the state level over the past, actually, five years or so. The city has updated their code for HB two thousand and one, which is the bottom bullet point here. That required clear and objective standards be applied to housing units, including accessory dwelling units. We're not quite there yet with our ADU language, but the planning commission wanted to take a deeper dive on this portion of it. So we pulled the language proposed for accessory dwelling units out of the packet for this evening. It's not being recommended to you by your planning commission. And we will add it to the twenty twenty-five work program for the planning commission, and then it will come forward to the city council. Planning commission even put forward the idea that they would really like to do a joint work session, such as the type of meeting we did with the town center, so that everybody could be at the table and talk about these issues. So more to come on that. So starting at the top of the slide, in twenty twenty-two, we were required by HB forty sixty-four to change how we address manufactured and prefabricated dwellings. This is not a huge change for Gladstone, we already have park standards and then development of individual units on individual lot standards. We are changing how we define some of these units, and it's really based on what years they were built because there were different standards in place. So we are just adopting the state definitions to make it clear and easy and just not have to get too into the weeds on that. The proposal is to do that. In twenty twenty-three, a, a couple of different bills passed. One is called the Housing Omnibus Bill, and that requires the commercial zoning districts add single-room occupancy, or excuse me, requires us to add those housing types that we talked about earlier. The mixed use up to eighty to one hundred and twenty of, of area median income and the multifamily up to sixty percent, so the lower income types in the commercial zoning districts, and then add that single-room occupancy as a permitted housing types in residential zones. Then, and also in twenty twenty-three, over a separate house bill, we are required to permit the conversion of buildings, existing buildings from commercial to residential. So they have to be in a commercial use already, and then they go to residential. Question came up at planning commission, you know, we're, we're pretty protective of what happens on Portland Avenue. We would love to see some commercial development about there, but are we going to see a four-story residential building built? And the answer is no, because our code doesn't allow that. It would require, if you wanted to go four stories, the first story has to be twelve feet high, as you'll recall from your downtown core work, which is the commercial component, that's not the residential portion. If someone built that and had twelve feet on the first floor and then three residential height stories above, operated the first floor as a commercial use and then decided to convert to residential, then you would have to allow that. So it's a, there's like four steps that would happen before that, that happens, but it still would be residential. So, you know, would, would address. So, you know, would, would address some of our issues that we're also seeing as a city. In twenty twenty four, there's, it was a small change that requires us to process administratively a plat, a replat of like a subdivision or expansion of a nonconforming use. Those were previously required to go before the planning commission. Any questions about that? So I think that is our only slide for housing.
Go ahead, Councilor Garland.
I didn't find it in here. And if it's here, please tell me if you, you can think of it. If a manufactured house is moved into a space and they remove the movable trailer out from underneath, are they no longer considered a manufactured house?
A manufactured house, it does not have to be movable.
Okay.
Yeah. So they could remove that and still qualify.
Thank you.
And I'll say too, because you raised the question of concern about types of housing we might see in the downtown. My first volunteer work in the city was to be on the downtown revitalization task force advisory committee, whatever it was. Back in two thousand sixteen, we worked for a year. We recommended something they adopted. City council adopted in two thousand seventeen. There was a long gap in between with not much done on that because there were some code suggested code changes. And finally, through the process, going through the planning commission and the city, we adopted those changes. But some people who were familiar with what we were looking at during the, during that process said, wow, it's changed. Now you're talking about affordable housing units in, you know, in your downtown commercial area, and we weren't talking about that before. And so it's, it's helpful here to see that part of that again is a state mandate from House Bill thirty three ninety five. And as we, as we seek to get housing in our community, that was our previous agenda item discussion. The possibility of doing it in terms of a mixed use type housing with defined income levels has been, you know, thrust upon us and we will consider tonight whether to willingly accept that and, and follow through with that.
I, I appreciate that comment. I will say that the Portland Avenue corridor is C two, where we currently allow any mixed use. So you can do any market rate housing as a use mixed with commercial. C three, Office Park and C one are where we're adding it. So it'd be like along McLaughlin, that sort of thing.
Okay.
And eighty second drive.
All right. We have those. Yeah, sometimes we forget we focus so much on downtown, we forget that we have other, two other major commercial areas.
Yes, thank you.
That could have housing as well. All right. Are there other questions or comments? I will say that as far as the clear and objective stands for A D U's, that is a process that could take, require us some time. And I appreciate the discussion that the planning commission had on that matter because we know it is, it's difficult sometimes to, to require too much of people and therefore, you know, discourage the housing being built. But we want to also preserve some, some continuity, some standards. And so it's great that we'll have more time to dive a little deeper into that particular issue. So I appreciate the planning commission sensitivity on that, that part of the code. Other comments or questions about the housing related proposed changes? By the way, to the public that's watching from home, in our agenda tonight, we have this, this agenda item is a hundred and thirty seven pages of code language. Most of our chapter seventeen of our Gladstone Municipal Code, which can be found online if you want to read it. Most of those pages are blank. There's just a few of them that have some highlighted areas where we're proposing changes. So it was a thick thing and long to read through, but every once in a while you come across, oh, okay, we're changing this to that. And, and that's what we're, that's what we're dealing with tonight. Okay. Go on to the next one then.
Okay, thank you. So just childcare is related to H B thirty one oh nine. In twenty twenty one, the rules changed. And this is, you know, we all know that there's deficit of childcare available in our state. So trying to make it easier for childcare facilities to open and operate. So now we'll permit them outright in commercial industrial zones where we previously had them conditional or not addressed at all. And you can't have additional land use regulations specific to child cares that aren't specific to other uses in that zone. So we did have a small special use section where we talked about, I think the outdoor play yard or something like that with childcare that we are now recommending. We just strike that from our code and allow the developer of the childcare facility who is following the state rules and regulations and getting the proper permits and licenses to provide the appropriate amount of facilities for that use. And then as far as residential zones, family childcare homes must be permitted in all residential zones. So those smaller operations that are occurring in the home where people live. Yes.
A question on that. Since we have these requirements, for example, of an outdoor play area and people have come to us prior to this asking for approval and that may have been made a condition of their approval. Does that condition then retroactively disappear?
It does. If someone came in and said, we were required to put in eight hundred square feet of play area and now we want to do something with that, we would say, sure, you are now allowed to do that.
Okay, so land that might have been used as a player could be used to expand capacity, for example. So it's similar to the parking requirements we have in, in other places. Maybe you get more bang for your buck out of that land.
Absolutely.
Although some people, as you say, some market providers of childcare will say this childcare facility, even though it's not required, does come with outdoor play area because children need to be outdoors. So you will appeal to the public, you know, in the way you approach that.
Yes.
Other comments? Counselor Cook, nothing on childcare, huh?
Well, when, when I like it all. Changes and I have any questions?
All right, very good.
And then just in the aqua, the code cleanup, there were very few of these, but whenever I saw something that needed a little. In, in fact, it was the definition section where a few things weren't in the same format as other definitions. So I updated that. And then we did talk at our last meeting about the city administrator or his designee. So we struck the his and it's now city administrator or designee in the proposed code. That was also a code standard that I needed to address in my staff report, which became your planning commission recommendation. So I just identified that with a red strike through because it's existing code language that I had to use for the, it was a little difficult, but just to identify that we knew we were striking it. So it should be out now. Any other, any questions about code cleanup or any other items that you identified that need to be added? Okay.
I will just add that as a reference, even though we had to read through a hundred and thirty seven pages and most of them were nothing changed. You had to read through all of them and look for those changes. So a word of appreciation to you and your staff for the work that you did in preparing these proposals for us tonight.
Thank you. So I'll just state for the record that these proposed text amendments are consistent with the Oregon statewide planning goals, Gladstone's municipal code, Metro's functional plan and the transportation planning rule. The findings of fact that supply these statements are in the planning commission recommendation, which has also been submitted to D L C D. And we've been working closely with D L C D and Metro staff throughout this proposal and don't have any formal comments from either body. Both were appreciative of the work that we had done.
And I will again say thank you to the planning commission for their, for their findings on that.
Yeah, great. So with that, the Gladstone planning staff and planning commission do recommend approval of ordinance fifteen thirty five before you this evening. And I've provided a sample motion. With that, the staff report portion is complete.
All right. Do we have any correspondence on this matter other than those items occluded in the agenda materials?
I have not received any correspondence.
All right. Public testimony. Has anyone asked to speak regarding this tonight?
No, I have not received any, but there are a few people online if they're wanting to speak.
All right. So at this point, we would accept public testimony for anyone who would wish to speak in support of the proposal. So if you are online, you can indicate by raising your hand. If you're using Zoom or dialing star nine to raise your hand. This is the time to do that. So Tammy, you look and see if.
And I see no one.
Okay. Now then I would like to hear from anyone who would wish to speak in opposition to the proposal. Same instructions.
No hands raised.
Okay. And finally, anyone who wished to provide any testimony that is neither in support of or in opposition to the proposal.
Again, no hands raised.
Okay. So I assume there's no further testimony or further questions from the audience. You're not seeing anything. Okay. Does staff have anything to add? You presented a pretty comprehensive report. Anything else? There was no public testimony for you to respond to, so.
No, that, that is all, but I am happy to answer any questions, but I think what's before you this evening is compliant with state law and will move us forward and check our box. And I forgot to mention that this is part of our town center grant. So this will finish a large task. After we get through the commercial parking lot tax next month, we'll be able to turn that part of our grant in and receive those funds. So this will, this will be a good benchmark.
Very good. All right. Do any members of the city council have questions of clarification to ask of staff at this time? All right then, hearing none. I will declare the public hearing on file number T X T twenty four dash O two closed. And now it's time for us as a council to deliberate before we make a motion and, and take a vote. So. Thoughts, comments? We've had good discussions so far and good material before us. I just, are there any other thoughts that people want to share?
I don't have any thoughts to share, except thanks for the planning commission for all the hard work and doing and sorting through the item ten. That was amazing what, what they do. So I appreciate that.
Anyone else? Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move to approve ordinance fifteen thirty five, adopting the proposed updates to title seventeen of the Gladstone Municipal Code, identified in city file T X X T dash two four dash zero two.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Counselor Garland moved and Counselor Blough seconded the motion to approve the ordinance. Any further discussion? All right. Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Counselor Blough.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Huckabee.
Yes.
Counselor Garland.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes. The motion or the, the motion was approved unanimously, therefore the ordinance is adopted. Thank you to staff, to planning commission, to counselors for your work on this. This, you, you referred to as checking a box, but you know, these are, these are big, important moves. And in, 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 in this context, we had some concern from a citizen on something else about things in our code, about how we move through processes and help people to accomplish things, development items. And there perhaps is more to be done. But on the housing matter, this is the priority right now. So I'm glad that we're able to address that and put it in the context of, of other important needs right now, childcare and parking and, and then just general cleanup. So you covered it all. Thank you very much. Yes, Counselor Garland.
I was just, I wanted to circle back on the childcare. Do you know if there's any open permits on childcare facilities that might be interested in this that we might need to contact or just?
That's a great question. I did meet with the Hillside Church, gosh, almost a year ago about their active permit. But haven't seen them come back to final, but I haven't heard from any other providers as far as like wanting to find a space and being told they couldn't operate. I, I actually, yes, that's true. I was trying to remember, I know with Watts, they have a childcare facility. They had asked about something different about an auto related use. So, sorry.
And what about the one on Webster?
I haven't heard from them.
They have purchased the property, but they're still going through a process, I believe, of hiring a project manager to rehabilitate that site.
Okay, well, all, all of this is such good news from where we were four years ago. So.
Yes.
Good on Gladstone.
I also want to just jump in and appreciate, we've had a lot of local in-home care providers pop up. I know that some of our, like, I, I have felt frustrated that some of these large centers have been unoccupied for such a long time. But I just really want to appreciate the new childcare providers that have sprung up in kind of a home care scenario. And sometimes when we think about home care, daycare or preschools, it seems like the inference there can be that they're lower quality. That is not the case with the new providers that we're seeing in Gladstone. Kitchen garden preschool and Wildflower Outdoor Learning Center are both exceptionally high quality childcare providers that have chosen Gladstone to open up their business just within the last year. So I just want to appreciate them for coming here and filling that need for us.
Thank you for that information. All right, we're moving on to the end of our regular meeting agenda. We do have a work session item to follow. But right now, let's see, any business carried forward?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Okay. Did anyone request to speak business from the audience?
I have not received any requests.
Okay. All right. So we'll move on to business from the council. Let me see, I'll start, I will go from my left to my right. So we'll start with Counselor Garland.
Um, I want to shout out a thank you to the people who helped at the Tuck Willa dinner this last month. It was a really nice event. We got to talk to some people from the company that manages the building and we had some really good conversations. The library grand opening was fabulous. I'm super happy to have my little bag. I carry it with pride with the print on the outside. And the first library, Clackamas County Library Board Meeting will be October twenty eighth in the new library. So that's exciting. Thank you to the, for the, on my, on the plant swap we had at the nature park. Thank you to the helpers and thank you to those that attended, even saw a few counselors. So that was kind of nice. The leaf pickup has begun. Remember?
It starts Monday, the fourteenth.
Okay. If you have a pile that can fit in your yard debris can, use your yard debris can.
Or your lawnmower.
Yeah, that works too, right? And I was, I got to go talk to a, what I thought was going to be a small group of scouts, which turned out to be a room full of scouts in Milwaukee to help them get a badge for speaking with an elected official. And I kept thinking in my mind, Mayor Milch really should be here. Mayor Milch really should be here. But it was a learning curve for me and I really enjoyed it and I would highly recommend to reach out to, to be with the kids because to watch them get to learn about things that would embed themselves in the future is really, it was a fun thing to do. I have to admit it. So that was the excitement in my life this month.
Counselor Roberts, do you have anything to share tonight?
Nothing major. Much like Mindy, I had an opportunity to speak. I think it was last year with a group of Cub Scouts and they were a bunch of fun. I think it was for the same badge and they just appreciated the opportunity and I think I appreciated it more. It was a lot of fun and it was a good time. But that is all I have tonight. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Counselor Cook.
Yeah, I have two things. One is Gladstone Community Center is hosting Indigenous Peoples' Day next month. I don't have the date. My internet died, so I don't have the date.
Next week, Monday, the fourteenth.
Excellent. Okay. I will say that the speaker that they have, who I don't have in front of me because my internet is down, wrote Tribal Histories of the Willamette Valley, which a lot of information about the people who've lived here in Gladstone and the surrounding area for forever has been orally passed on and not really written down. And so this is an indigenous author who wrote one of the only books about the tribal history of literally what it says on the can, Tribal Histories of the Willamette Valley. Oh, Jackie has the flyer.
It is Dr. David Lewis, P H D.
Yeah. I happen to own a bookstore, as some of you know, and this is one of our top selling books. This is really, our community has really responded well to this. This is a very distinguished author. So I would encourage everybody to attend to can. And then just some thoughts. We've had a lot of discussions around planning, housing, transportation, climate friendly and equitable communities. And, you know, I didn't get my degree in public policy. Has anyone gotten their degree in public policy, plan, urban planning? Anyone get, okay, me either. And so we're all here representing our community. I think as we're diving deeper into these issues, I think. I think as we're diving deeper into these issues, I think, you know, the, the packets that we get are a great start for understanding these issues. But I don't think that that's where our education should stop. You know, I think we have a responsibility to really reach out and learn more about these issues because a lot of times the answers to public policy questions like planning, transportation, housing, childcare are not intuitive, right? Like Greg, I thought your question was great about like, if we're building new housing, it's going to be real shiny with granite countertops. How does that help someone who's on section eight? So I think a lot of these questions, you really do have to go out of your way to learn them and, and, you know, get more comfortable with these topics. I've been working on that personally. I want to throw out one resource that I found that's been helpful for me. There is a nonpartisan nonprofit called Strong Towns. This is just one resource that you can reach out to. They're on Instagram, which I love because I like never, it's, it's hard to, you know, read a big book about public policy, but it's really great to just be scrolling on Instagram and have some new information about housing or transportation. Some of the big strides in Oregon have actually been on their Instagram lately. They're a national nonprofit, but Oregon's been doing some really exciting things lately. So just throwing it out there, I think Strong Towns is one resource to follow. I would encourage all councillors to really just use these packets as a starting point for learning about these issues so that we can better represent our city.
Thank you, Councillor Cook. Councillor Blough, welcome back and anything tonight?
Well, had a long day today. We were at the Northwest Public Employees Diversity Conference and went to a bunch of breakout sessions. A lot of really good information. I'm very excited to bring some of that back to our community and yeah, that's about it for me.
Councillor Alexander.
Yes, so Saturday I got to go on the watershed tour. You do it every year, the first, first Saturday in October. It was really amazing, really amazing. I mean, you're, you're going in these little communities like up in Oregon City and you didn't even know the water thing was there. You know what I mean? It's a, and then we went to Lake Oswego and went to that one. And it was just everything they showed you and Kim Swan, she planned the whole thing. It was amazing. You had breakfast and you had lunch and you toured all these plants and could ask any question, look at anything you wanted. And while I was there, what was really neat to see is I'm just looking on my phone because I met, I met a girl there and, and she was walking around and, and she had two younger people with her. So I went up and I said, well, that's interesting that they came and it's really neat that they're here. And her name is Hannah Schmidt and she is the leader of the Oregon City Youth Advisory Commission. And she said, these are two of our advisory children that want her to learn. So I got her name and said I would share it with anybody. And she said, if we needed to, for her to come and talk or anything else on the youth advisory. And then the only other thing I would think is just with Halloween, be vigilant, pay attention to the kids. They don't pay attention to you and just have a good Halloween. Thanks.
Thank you, Councillor Alexander. Councillor Huckabee.
Thank you. I have a little bit to talk about tonight. I want to echo Councillor Cook's highlight of our Indigenous Day at the Community Center. That is going to be on Monday, the fourteenth from eleven to three, so reserve space on your calendars. And the day before that, the Clackamas Community College at the Environmental Learning Center is also hosting an Indigenous Peoples' Day and that is eleven to three on Sunday also. Let's see, I'm looking forward to going to the League of Oregon Cities Conference next week as well. There'll be a few of us there. I wanted to share just some examples of what type of sessions that we have as councillors available to us. We have a workshop called Navigating City Governance, Charter Updates, Judicial Impacts and Council Process. We have one I'm really excited for, Hate Speech and Civility, What's a City to Do? We have some tours we can also participate in. And another exciting one is Government to Government with Tribal Nations and our very own representative, Vanessa Hartman, will be presenting at that, so I'm excited for that. Councillor Blough and I went to a diversity conference down at the convention center today. It was very well attended. We had some of our local elected officials and also county workers present at that. I'll share a couple of sessions that we had at that as well. Back here. Oh, actually it's on here, sorry. Lots of resources tonight here, sorry about that. So the first workshop that I was able to participate in was Bias and Extremism: Interrupting Conflict in an Election Cycle. That was very, you, we learned some really interesting facts, including that after the 2020 election, thirty percent of election workers felt abused, threatened or harassed. So I will give a plug to please be kind and respectful to our election workers this year in a couple of weeks. One of them got canceled. I'll skip that one, I don't remember which one I went to for that, sorry. And then there was a very interesting one, which was our last session, which was a Practical Guide to DEI in the Government and Equity Officers Lessons From the Ninety-Day Fentanyl Emergency Task Force. A while back, the state had a ninety-day fentanyl task force and she was a part of it. So she shared her experience and lessons learned and how we can move forward with more intention. That's not necessarily around the fentanyl crisis, but there were some great pointers there as well. So you guys, I have a lot to talk about tonight. Just a reminder to everybody that you need to register to vote if you have not already by October fifteenth. So that's next week. Ballots start going out on October sixteenth. And I just want to encourage everybody to please show up and vote.
Thank you. I will, I will say thank you to all of you for attending events like the League of Oregon Cities and local conferences and, you know, demonstrations of our water facilities and other things and, and meeting with youth groups. It's all a way that we put ourselves out there, learn a little bit more, as Councillor Cook was saying about things. If you saw how many books I buy and, and I buy, I buy a lot of them that are out of print, so I can't buy them at your store sometimes. But you're right, there are good resources out there to help us prepare for these complicated issues and to see what the current thinking is and what other cities and states are doing. And, you know, it would be very expensive for us to bring in the experts to teach us the kinds of things that get taught at a League of Oregon Cities Conference. And so I'm grateful to those of you who have the time and ability to attend something like that and draw on those resources and bring them back and, and make us a better council as a result. I saw that the, the video of the library grand opening is now out on YouTube. You can just go to YouTube and look up Gladstone Library Grand Opening and watch it. You know, my speech, of course, is the highlight, but at the beginning, one of the really cool things is that County Administrator Gary Schmitz's opening remarks, over those remarks, they showed the time lapse of the building, the construction of the library. So you see it from a vacant lot all the way to its finished state with, you know, the parking spaces and everything all complete. And so it's, it's great to relive that project that we watched for so many months. And, and I'm, I've been to the library five or six times now. My grandsons enjoy going there. I see families. It is becoming the kind of a place where people in the community begin, you know, continue to connect and form relationships. And that's something that we've needed. Communities need that kind of public space and the library is one where you don't have to buy anything. You don't have to pay for anything. You just go there and, and, you know, become part of the community. And to their credit, I know that I, I've listened to some of the county library board meetings. And I know it's been a very difficult struggle for staff to make that transition to the new building. You know, there's always little hiccups along the way, but they did a great job. And almost immediately, it was within a week of the opening, they have started back into the programs that, that have brought the community in. And Gladstone is really responding to those community programs for children and families. Apparently, a lot of people who live in the, in the library service area of the Oak Lodge Library are going to Milwaukee or having difficulty maybe finding the parking and getting children into the Oak Lodge Library that's still in a leased building. But the staff is excited that the Gladstone community is really responding and coming in and, and finding good things happening in our community. So it is going to benefit this community in a lot of ways, including as an anchor, I think, to downtown development. Who wouldn't want to live within walking distance of a great brand new library? So it's exciting. I think that's all I have on the council. We have a council adjени- planning document in our, in our packet tonight. And so I will adjourn the city council meeting and move into a city council work session. And the item on our work session agenda is Discussion of Draft Ordinance Fifteen Thirty-three, which would add new Gladstone Municipal Code Chapter Five Point One O Massage Facilities. We are not going to be considering the adoption of that ordinance tonight. This is just a work session from our police department. So we will not be using the, you know, the legislative hearing script. We're just going to get informed and when we're ready to adopt something, we'll be well informed on that. Chief Schmerber, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council. First, I want to thank you for the opportunity for this work session. This is important. This is an important ordinance. We want to make sure it's tight and nailed down for the Gladstone community. And I also want to thank Chad Jacobs, our city attorney, for all his work on this. Just to go in a little bit. We have received feedback and I think we've addressed that feedback in this current draft. Ideally, what we heard loud and clear is that we did this ordinance was never intended to punish current massage businesses, but to discourage illicit, illicit massage business from coming into the city, right? So that's, that is, that's what's most important to us. A little bit of background real quick that I, that I just want to read. I know it's in the staff report, but I do want to get this out, is the Gladstone Police Department is aware that illicit massage industry is, is known as a large and well-networked human trafficking market. And the Portland metropolitan region is not immune to these types of businesses. The police department finds human tra- human trafficking to be a violation of the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of Oregon and a violation of laws of the United States and the state of Oregon. The city of Gladstone finds it best, in its best interest of the public and the interests of public health, safety and general welfare, to prohibit businesses who engage in illicit activities from obtaining a business license in the city of Gladstone. Just briefly, the proposal, this, the purpose of this ordinance is to prevent illicit massage businesses from being able to obtain a business license through the city of Gladstone by means of a rigorous, rigorous application process that requires background checks and stipulate that massage businesses must satisfy certain requirements to obtain a local license before opening. By doing this, we intend on identifying legitimate massage businesses from illicit massage businesses to create an inoperable environment for storefront selling commercial sex. This, this is, this is a huge problem and it's growing in the metropolitan area. We all know that there, there have been search warrants and, and raids on places in Lake Oswego. We know West Lynn. I also know of some in Oregon City that, that have been, you know, shut down shortly. But what I also know is in the state of Oregon, there's no real city ordinance that addresses these issues. California, and I know Attorney Chad Jacobs was able to find some out of California that, that have these, but no real valid ones in the state of Oregon. So we're looking at this. We put a lot of work into this. I've met with a local business owner who is actually in the massage business, is a licensed massage therapist. So they've been able, he's been able to help me walk through and understand some of this along with the feedback I received from Administrator Betts, through feedback from, I think, council. One of the, I just want to move to order Exhibit A that I think you guys have. One of the main topics that I want to cover is, is one of the issues that came out as the punishment is there's an addendum that's, that will be attached. Once we look at this, this is the ordinance itself. And so we have to put an addendum attached to that to fulfill the requirements of Exhibit A. And that's not there yet. It's, we want to get through this first and we'll build that addendum based on, based on the ordinance. And Chad, jump in here if, if I'm confusing anything or if I missed anything. Appreciate the smile. But one of the, one of the biggest things on this is because the addendum was originally pretty long and it still is going to be long because it's going to be rigorous and that's what we want. But we didn't want to punish the current legitimate massage businesses. So in order to do that, you know, in ten, under, if you look at F, five point one zero point one, zero one zero definitions under F, massage facilities. And you turn the page and you go all the way to the end where it says ten. Facilities where the only massage occurring is conducted by licensed massage therapists, that's one of the exemptions. A majority of, of people legitimate businesses are licensed massage therapists to the state. And I've been working with the state and communicating with the state massage board on this ordinance itself. And so we're finding that this is in line with what their intentions are also. There's also a lot of other exemptions that I won't touch on, but with regards to schools and, and businesses that are teaching the business, those types of things are exempt, which are legitimate. Again, we're focusing on, on these illicit massage businesses. And according to the board, a majority of them are storefronts. So when you hear storefront in the, in the, in the staff report, storefront meaning it's not a typical retail store where, or retail where, or chiropractic office where you offer massages also. These are just storefront businesses and, and, and that's where we're finding majority of the problems. We may have to address something later, but right now that's, that's the issue.
Businesses posing, I guess I'm, I'm, I lost you at storefront business.
So storefront business that offer massages.
Okay.
And, and so.
A walk-in type of?
Like a walk-in business, those types of things.
Okay.
One of the other elements of this is, and I'm going to kind of bounce around, is the time of day when unlawful acts of the facility requirements, number six, unlawful to permit or allow massage facilities to operate between the hours of nine PM and six AM. So that. So that, that was a big one and that was appreciated by at least one of the business owners that I, that I talked to here in town. And then you have other, other requirements like, you know, requirements term either to ensure like operators permit required and, and term. We want to ensure that, through that, we want to ensure that these people are licensed to the state or we've identified these individuals who are suggesting they're doing one type of massage that may be not governed by the state, but yet we want to know about it. Does that make sense?
Okay.
Otherwise, I'm hoping that you may have questions for this. I think we've, we've nailed it down pretty well. But if you have questions regarding any aspect of this, please let me know and Chad, jump in here if, if you need to.
One thing that I would like to get direction from, and I talked to the chief about this, is that when you read this section about fees, and let me find it.
Five point one zero point zero five zero.
It's not intended that the person applying for this type of license should have to pay a fee on top of their business application fee. But it doesn't really specify that in here. So some feedback that we received is, is there going to be more than one fee for this type of ordinance? And so I'm just wondering if maybe we either need to remove that section and it's clear in the application that it's like a regular business that applies, it's a hundred dollars a year or it's prorated depending on when they get it that time of year. But there are no additional fees because it's a massage facility. So I didn't know if any of you had comments as you read through that section specifically.
I wrote down exactly what you said right here. This is a business license fee, not another additional fee, correct? That was my question. So it's not.
Yes, yeah, so it's not, it's not. Yes, yeah. So it's not. It's not. There's no fee attached to it. It's a business license. It's a business license. I left this in in the event. In the future, we may we may apply a fee depending on the significance of the background checks or the time spent researching. We can take this out and put it at it later if if we need to. Um, you know, as an addendum to the ordinance, but um, that was the intent behind the fees. At this point, we we we're not, we don't have any fees.
I had a question about fees.
Go ahead.
Does my my thought was, does a person who already has a state license need to pay a fee to the city? Or would it just be acceptable to ask people who do not currently have a massage license to pay that background fee? Because doesn't a background check come with a state license already?
Yes, that's correct. And that's why and that's why on the addendum, even the original one, you know, instead of filling out the entire packet, you would only have to fill out your name, your your business address and your license number or license information. So we can just verify that. And so, yeah, so then the state does a background and they do a very thorough background and and we're going to let that let that go and let them do it. If you are not licensed, then sure, we're gonna, we're gonna want to see if there are any criminal paths behind that.
Okay, and you can't ask for an additional fee on that? I mean, to cover.
Well, that that's up to that's up to council.
Oh, okay.
That's up to council and that and that's specifically why I left that in there because I'm not sure what time, how much time is going to be spent on this. This is new and it's not been done. You know, this is this is a an ordinance. We're trying to make it extremely difficult for illicit businesses to come in. Doesn't mean to say that they won't. We have other options based on this ordinance that we can that we can deal with. But it's new. And and we'll see.
Okay.
So what we would suggest is as we are moving forward to adopt this, that we can keep that fee language in there, but any fee that we added would have to come back to the city council to be included in the master fee schedule, which is adopted by a resolution. This will give the chief an opportunity to get through a few of these applications to determine how much of law enforcement involvement could be with licensing this. But I also want to ask a follow on to Counselor Garlington is if they're not licensed by the state, they need to be, correct?
If they're not licensed by the state and are conducting massages as outlined in O R S and required by the massage board, they need to be licensed. What's also important is I I think I've learned way too much about the massage business. What's what's also important is even if you're the manager or owner of the building, you're required to have a permit through the state in order to have a massage business there. Um, so there's multiple licenses that are required for a property. And through the state, they're all Class A misdemeanors if they're violated. Chad has his hand. I don't know.
No, Chad, go ahead. Uh, yes, add add your comments here.
No, no, I think some of this may have been covered with with Jackie and Chief's comments, but I just want to reiterate a couple of points just to make sure that everyone's on the same page. With the fees, we can certainly change that language to be permissive. Um, so instead of it saying shall, we can say that the council may do may adopt it. And by leaving that language in in being permissive, then you have the option to add it in the future if you want, but you're not required to. So I think that one's a pretty easy fix to give you that flexibility moving forward. Um, but then the second point I would just want to clarify, and I I think the chief's done a pretty good job of this, but just sort of reiterating the point is, you know, what the chief talked about at the beginning and sort of the the interest that we're trying to address here, the problems that we're trying to address here related to human trafficking and related to prostitution, this ordinance was tailored to address those specific issues. So when we talk about people who have licenses with the state and are conducting massages that are regulated by the state, we're not going to regulate those. We've exempted those completely from this ordinance. So they're not going to be required to deal with all these additional sort of requirements. But there are people who conduct massages as defined by this ordinance. You know, typically those are, I believe, uh, Chief Schmerber said it's like reflexology or something, dealing with massages of the feet. Um, and then they sort of engage in other illicit activities behind that. And because those activities aren't regulated by the state, there's a gap. And so what this ordinance does is it seeks to fill that gap that's for those areas that aren't regulated by the state to make sure that we're not allowing those kinds of activities to serve as a curtain for these illicit activities that we're trying to prohibit. And so that's really what this is trying to do is just fill in that gap. So if, again, if there's any licensed massage therapists who are engaging in massage activities that are regulated by the state, we're exempting them from the requirements of this ordinance. And so we're really just trying to fill in that gap where, you know, people are sort of skirting around the state law requirements because they're not engaging in those types of massage activities, but they're engaging in other types of massage activities that then lead to illicit behaviors.
And and what we found, thank you, Chad, what we found and what I've learned from other other jurisdictions is that they're moving to more of the foot massage. They're saying they're foot massage businesses when there might be more activity going on there.
Uh, Attorney Jacobson, Chief, I appreciate that that information because that that's helpful. You know, this is something where the state is not doing at the at the state level, a regulation that would impact cities and and prevent, you know, and and reduce the need for us to even bother with this because if it was prohibited by the state, we could enforce that law locally. Uh, so it does come down to cities. Uh, we had a meeting of the Metropolitan Mayor's Consortium recently and uh we are a group that, you know, the mayors get together and we we help, we we have a lobbyist who speaks on our behalf on issues at state level related to housing and transportation and and uh, you know, the other things that we think of. But I said, should we be looking at this massage, illicit massage industry and and the trafficking? And one of the mayors pointed out that I think in the last legislative session, there was legislation to legalize prostitution in Oregon. Uh, so we wouldn't necessarily be on the same page with with some legislators at least to who want a more libertarian view of of what people can and can and do can and can't do with their bodies or other people's bodies. Uh, but uh, I'm glad that you we recognize this is not a victimless crime. This is something that often uh can involve people who are uh really being held against their will, who have no other options, who may may have to live in these facilities because they don't have another place to live. This is what I've read. And so uh, I'm glad that at the local level, we're taking a serious look at it and siding on the the side of uh prevention of this and protection of uh safety and uh, you know, standards of decency in our community.
Yeah, thank you. And I and I know this ordinance addresses the identification, uh, the sleeping, and so it covers the gamut of of what we all know uh, right now that's going on because it's well talked about throughout the metro area.
I have questions. Sorry, my light's been on for a while. Does this have any crossover to, say, pedicure and or nail tech?
No, we we covered that in in the in the ordinance that they're exempt, so.
Great. All right, now. How often is the state doing the background checks for the licensed L M Ts?
Yeah, I don't have that information. I think they got to renew every two years.
Every two years.
I think they get that and and but don't quote me on that. I remember uh telling me two years, so.
Okay.
Um, but I believe that is that is the stance.
And then we're not doing background checks on other business owners because they're not licensed, correct? We're just focusing on that.
Yeah, right now, right now, we're we're focused on.
So somebody wants to open a candy shop, we're not doing a background check.
Well, it's it's it just depends on. Yeah, so, correct. Somebody opens a candy shop, we're not going to do a background check.
Right, right. Hypothetical. Um, and then how long? Because I know the the Police Department is doing background checks for a variety of reasons. How much staff time does that take?
It doesn't take much because we're really just running running to check for criminal history. So if someone's going to open a daycare and and we want to make sure there's no criminal activity regarding child abuse, right?
Right.
And so we 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 look at those types of things, so.
And I'd also like to point out that one of the reasons why Chief has taken the initiative in this in Gladstone is because we do have a business license application process. A lot of cities don't require business licenses. And so therefore, it's also hard for them to require massage ordinance to get in place. And so he's really uh taken the initiative with trying to get something that is fits Gladstone's needs, but that maybe other communities in Oregon will be able to adapt it to what they need as well.
Yeah, I've always felt that our local business license, it's not a, it's not a big revenue raiser. It's not, it's mostly to allow us to put people out of business if they don't comply with certain standards and and operating things. So uh, you license businesses in order to say, you lose your license, you can't work here anymore. And this is very consistent with that kind of a policy.
Yes, it is. And even in our business license, there there's requirements that you have to meet, right? And so I we can, the city can actually pull a business license for violation of certain rules.
Well, I just, I want to say one thing also that it's it is important to me as a citizen of the city that given how many people run businesses out of their home, that these kinds of businesses aren't able to just pop up in any home in any neighborhood in our in our city. So I thank you for that. But I have a couple of questions. On page eleven dash five.
You're gonna have to give me, I don't.
Oh.
You're gonna have to give me the number.
Uh, the point oh three oh, and then go to number two. And it talks about the list of uh services provided?
Yes.
Okay, it makes it, the way I read it, it could, they could have it be in any language they want. It just has to be said that they're going to do that. But if you had a police officer go into a business that you thought was having issues, would you want it to be in another? Would they want it to be in another language?
No, we'd actually want it to be in English.
Okay, so I think that that should be specified.
Okay, and that's a description all provided.
That it needs to be in English and other languages can be offered as well.
Just to note that that is um in the context of the application, not the, not in the moment at the facility. But I don't know. So that's that is what.
Well, it says to be posted.
To be posted at the facility. So no different than, no different than, and and again, we're talking about storefronts. You go on to get a pedicure.
Yeah.
I happen to like getting pedicures, but I know what the list of the price is.
Yeah.
I'm not afraid to say that. I'm okay.
Then I guess if I'm confused about that, then there is a clarifying opportunity, right?
Okay, and then number six in that same line, um, where it says, um, why did I write? It says it looks like a but. I should say however. Including, I I would think you would more clearly just be anybody that's there, anybody that's employed there at all.
Well, I I think when you when you look at the when in number six, when you look at the employees and at the massage facility included, but not limited to the manager and each massage technician, and you look at the definitions, that's pretty much going to cover.
Okay, I just thought when I read it, I thought, oh, that was like a but. And then on the operators per uh, the fees that you were talking about, is that easier to add or to change in your opinion?
Easier to add.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have one question. Is there any correlation? That's why I'm asking because, well, because when you went down to the end of Portland and Arlington, that Little White House, the minute that they used to, they cover the windows. And then this one that was on Arlington, they cover the windows. Now, I go to places acupuncture and massage. I get pedicures too. You go there, massage, and and no windows are covered. Right. Is there a correlation when they put all those, cover all the windows with those big massage signs or not? Yeah, you know, I I I don't know. I I I don't know. And in fact, I looked in the the sign code today. No other code, but I looked at the sign code. I think that's got to be covered in the sign code is their restriction. I couldn't find anything. Yeah, so and and I'll take a look because I didn't think about that, but I would rather than not be covered like that, but I don't know if I can, if we can govern that. So I'd I'd have to look at our current codes to see if that would be a violation somewhere.
To be able to add that they can't, that the windows can't be completely covered, that there has to be a line of sight? Is that what you're asking for?
No, I don't know. I'm just saying all the ones, I mean, okay, so if you, I was going down eighty second one night and there's this light flashing, right? Old eighty second down there to get on the freeway.
Yes.
And there's one in there in that strip mall by Napa. Okay, so and the light was, okay, and then someone looked out the door. This is at eleven thirty at night, and I'm wondering what, you know, and that's, all those windows are covered. But if you go to someplace that says acupuncture, massage, or whatever, you don't see the windows covered all up, you know, it just says acupuncture and massage and you walk into the business. So I didn't know if that was anything had to do with when they cover all the windows.
Well, I think we have to be really careful too. I mean, I know of people in Gladstone who are also licensed massage therapists. And if you're in their facility getting a massage and it's just the two of you in there, sometimes for safety issues, especially if it's after work, say, seven o'clock at night, there's a lot of times that you're grateful as a working person that somebody would work that late for you. But yeah, it's sometimes it's helpful to be able to lock that door and not allow other people to be able to look in. I.
Locking the door, I understand. And you can go into, okay, go down behind the the laundromat. There's a massage therapist. She used to be a counselor. Her windows, you can massage there, licensed massage therapist. You go inside, then she takes you back into a room. See, do you not, have you not seen the ones where every window says massage, massage, massage from every corner down and you can't even see inside?
I think what you're, I think what you're speaking to is, you know, kind of the difficulty that we're facing, right? Like, there are context clues, right? Where if you're looking for an illicit type of massage, right? If you and I had to walk down the street and pick out an illicit massage, we would probably do a pretty good job at guessing which ones were illicit and which ones were not. However, the burden of proof, if you're going to pursue a criminal case against someone, I'm not a lawyer, but I think the challenge that you guys are facing with this, right, is that you can't arrest someone for having a weird window, right?
Correct.
So I'm really grateful for you. This is a really difficult situation to navigate, right? Unless you're in the moment, how do you tell what's an illicit massage versus what's not? Which I think is why this has been such a challenge for you guys. The Lamont Week ran a story recently about how this is really prevalent, you know, trafficked people being, you know, roped into massage places. Um, and it's a really, it's very difficult for enforcement. And so I just want to really appreciate Attorney Jacobs and Chief Schmerber for going through this process and doing a great job at being tenacious in pursuing justice for trafficked people while still making sure that we're not harming our existing businesses in Gladstone. And I think it's a really difficult thing to untangle. Um, and I'm just grateful for your work with that.
Thank you. And I and I will give credit to the feedback that we received from, I think, a couple of the local businesses and and the one business that sat down with me and and helped me walk through this, so. That was great. Thank you. That's what I was trying to get, get at.
Hey.
Counselor Huckabee, go ahead.
Um, has there been any work? Because we know this has been in Lake Oswego, um, Oregon City here. Is there any to what you're allowed to tell me? Um, is there any sort of joint task force that's going on between these communities and the county to say, hey, there needs to be a crackdown?
I, here's what I can say to that.
Yeah.
Is that it's on everybody's mind and it's discussed.
Okay. That's sufficient. And just thank you. This is this is a heavy lift. Um, and this whole process has definitely made me as an individual more hypervigilant to identify what are probably illicit.
Well, and and to that question, you know, you you have to have a law to enforce in order to do a crackdown. So that part of you're addressing the, you know, the the requirement that has to be there in order for this kind of enforcement uh, at at a local level, at a community level to be done.
Yeah, thank you. And even even with this ordinance, understand it's it's what I call it's it may not be completely, for lack of a better term, bulletproof with preventing the coming in, but it gives us tools and it gives us opportunity to prevent this. Not only, not only upfront, but even if one slips through, we're able to address it easier.
And we're not hoping that these businesses go to a different city. We're hoping that we will be an example for a lot of communities to to follow a similar procedure and put an end to this altogether, uh, not just sweep it across the city limits to somewhere else. Well, I I think you and our attorneys uh have done a great job with this. You're sensitive to the issues. Uh, as Counselor Cook and others have articulated, uh, let's keep the legitimate people in business, but uh, the illicit stuff has got to go. Uh, and not so much got to go, but we don't want it to start in first place. That's what we're really doing. We just put up that barrier and keep it, keep it away. So um, if you want to uh develop this further based on any input you have, uh, based on continuing input you get from from the community. Uh, Tammy, did we have anybody that wanted to address this uh from online tonight?
I think Counselor Roberts has his hand raised.
Um, no, he doesn't. I I don't see his.
Okay.
Okay, so um.
No, I did not receive any and no one has their hand up.
Okay, so keep working on it.
One, one thing that I know, I've got two changes based on communication with you with regards to one, the fees, I think, uh, Chad. Chad brought up May.
May, yes.
And then English. We'll see how that fits in. It would, you know, post it in English. Otherwise, I have not received any other feedback. If I do, great. We'll, we'll make it available and see how it fits. I'm grateful because as Jackie put in her, excuse me, Administrator Betts put in, in her email to everybody is I'm looking through one lens while local businesses looking through another, and and those seem to have meshed very well at this point.
That's good to hear. All right. Thank you very much. I think that concludes the work session portion of tonight's agenda, so I will accept a motion in the work session to adjourn the entire meeting.
Some of it. Second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.